We were kind of seeing the writing on the wall, not that it was bad. She was voting with her P and she was mostly getting it bad.
Yeah.
And so I approached.
It's very hard.
It's great for cats.
Yeah.
It just is and.
It was very.
Ian Jackie.
Oh yeah.
Good.
I got.
Good year. Yeah.
So I had to scratch.
You're not gonna fall backwards.
Yeah.
I've been enjoying Puff's day and um that was open that and over time we became so. And everybody's happy.
Well, but she comes.
Yeah. But we kissed up once and he comes and I like.
Yes.
That went with it.
This would get so cute and and we got it. They look at everything that she did, it was anxious.
Well, she went through a lot with that hurt and the other medical issues than that, so I think a lot was wrong. We're here. Yeah. Marcel told me that. But it was such a huge job that she was a doctor.
I am so glad that the doctor volunteered to do that because it was. And you don't miss you.
Doctor, she's an excellent doctor. I'm sorry, she's not like that rest for anyone.
Yeah. Getting that gal out. That.
And brown.
Yeah.
Yeah, she and she doesn't come in the winter.
Yeah.
Thank you. She's so far away. But Dr. Jane is still at Lorena Wild one.
Mm hmm.
And she.
So who's doing the surgery?
I think you have two or three doctors that come now.
Cool.
Yeah, when I'm when my missing, the other missing, we knew missing. She disappeared April first. And what disappeared? And so I sent her a picture of her, like April nineteen photo. Is that she must have gone to the cat conference. I don't know.
Yeah.
Must have been a communion of cats.
We've had pretty much taken one. Yeah, they're gone.
April first, April Monday.
Yeah, that's that's the longest I've heard.
Well.
Except for these incredible journey then.
What am I, cats, the cats, the twenty six days and we all got out of the Monica town and then I'm like and because I was going to try and they left a window open. It's not as good as you know, so I found them. Once this day is. It was.
That now. It's always hope. That's almost a month.
It was. It was four pounds. There is.
All happy skipping away. Missing is almost getting.
The other Missy, she was like this and I thought pregnant, but apparently he was staying before and this is just a common pet.
Ready to start Ben?
We are ready to start.
Alright, let's call the meeting to order tonight. We've got some interesting, at least one really interesting discussion topic coming down. So welcome all. And you can join us here today. Then why don't you go focus in on if they're here remotely, how they can participate?
Sure thing. Looks like everybody who's on is via Zoom, so you can raise your hands using functions at the bottom of the Zoom screen. If you would like to participate, if anybody does come on the phone, star six will mute, unmute you. Star nine will raise your hand. We ask you to do that. Or to get our attention.
Thanks Ben. Alright. Uh, public comment period. This is for comments on items that are not on our agenda, which folks would like to work on.
Uh, good evening, Mary Verkar Stevenson. Just a little briefly, I wanted to comment on the tree program. Um, I want to applaud you for putting up all the signs and everything and I want to put my two cents in for what kind of trees we want. Um, I want trees that are shady and that provide some pollinator like lindens. Uh, um, uh, some, you know, for bees and other things and I don't care if we have bump outs. Those trees need to be not cut down at twenty years of age like the previous few were. Um, so something that lasts, that will be taken care of in the initial period. Because some of the trees died because they didn't get enough water after they were planted and that's why their trunks burst. And trees die and that happens when the camber is not good. So I urge you to think about long-lived trees, towns that have beautiful big trees and provide they're cooler, they're more aesthetic than just seeing concrete everywhere. And it's amazing that the temperature under a tree with shade can be anywhere from ten to twenty degrees cooler than uh not under the tree. And that makes everybody happier, especially when you have a hundred degree temperatures. So and it looks nice. Green is green. So um, I'm not sure how many inputs you've had, but hopefully you get some of those trees planted in the fall and uh, we'll see. So and just my usual mantra, let's keep up what we have now and try to maintain it instead of looking for new stuff to to do in town. Uh, we've got a lot of maintenance issues town and it would be nice to take care of what we have. Like the water plant.
Okay. I was kind of wondering if you were talking about just maintenance on on trees that were still alive.
No, no, I, 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 you know, I know you're going to cut some of them down because they they won't live for very long anyway. They're dying and the new ones that will be put in, but other things. So um, I I've talked to you in the past about uh, you know, we have a lot of stuff here in town that needs maintenance or maintaining and everything costs money to maintain. Uh, so uh, let's take care of and please, please, please pave day process road. Please. I know it's not your problem, but we all need to put in that good word for his road.
It's in here.
It's time. Alright, thank you very much.
Then I know that planting trees on some of these sites is it's pretty challenging and they're not great sites and it's concrete and asphalt around them. Um, trees like to spread their roots, they need water out there along the rip line actually, so. Who's doing the tree selections in terms of what's adapted for the conditions that we have?
So what, one of the things that Mary's referring to is for the trees that either were taken down and be taken down for their own health. There are some QR codes up there and you can fill out surveys about what tree you would like to see. And so each one of those trees has, I think there are four options. Those four options were picked for their suitability for that location.
Okay.
From a list that was provided by the arborist consultant that the city hired a couple of years ago. And so um, who's picking um an arborist narrowed down by city staff selected by the public?
Yeah, I think it's just important to make sure the trees that we have are appropriate for that for that site, for that growing site. Because I love a lot of trees, but I know they won't grow in some places, so I just say.
One of the big lessons learned from the arborist report was when they're talking about the tree well uh, that are constructed with street projects. Oftentimes, that's a very uh, shallow bed of dirt. So they'll go through and they'll have compacted gravel underneath that. And so when we rehab or when we replant, one of the efforts that the public works crew is gonna grapple with is what does it mean to remove the tree and prepare the well for a new tree? That's something that they hadn't considered before that arborist report came out, so hopefully um maintain and improve as we can.
Good. Anything else, Mary?
No, thank you. I'm going to leave night out, so I'm not going to be here for the rest. Are you recording this meeting? Okay, so I can listen too. I've I've got the pack and I'll do some light reading this evening, but thank you very much for listening.
We're gonna be looking at the at the shoreline public access plan. But we're not gonna be, I think, we won't be doing anything definitive.
I haven't looked at it. I have to say.
We'll get it. Share your comments.
I have been hearing a lot about it in the public that menu, but um, there's there's some concerns about parking and people coming onto private property and.
Anybody else? Alright, well, thank you much. Okay, let's move to minutes of the May eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting. You too.
I read the minutes.
I read them also. I will recommend approval.
I would second that.
Motion and second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, to um since we have no new business, to our old business and the shoreline public access. You want to lead us off on this?
I will lead us off and quickly hand over to Marina French. She is part of the DCG watershed team that's put this together. Alex is who has presented to you in the past. Alex is a planner with that group. Marina is a landscape architect with that group, uh, helping pull things together. So they delivered us a draft plan a couple of weeks ago. Um, started the public vetting process for the draft plan. You've got the draft in your packet tonight, print it off for you. There are public comments received since then for sets of those that will look to incorporate to, but hand over to Marina.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I've probably met some of you when we were down there, but for those I haven't met, I'm Marina French. I'm a landscape architect and restoration designer with DCG Watershed, so our team has been working with the city and coming out into all around the city of Stevenson and meeting people, talking to people and putting this together for you. It's been a really cool project. So um, Ben asked me to share a little more detail of this plan specifically focusing in on, you know, once we've gotten to the point of having these projects, which you are all familiar with, this sort of final nine, well, maybe there'll be ten projects that, uh, you know, what did we, how did we basically finish that analysis and dive into more detail for each of these projects and kind of step through the matrix we created for each project? And then any more detail, I guess, you know, Ben, let me know if I'm leaving anything out. Should I share screen or?
Think it's all set up for you to do that? Go ahead and try.
Okay. Great. Nope, disabled, but I could also refer to the packet if people have that or let me know.
There it is. Okay.
Is this aisle somewhere in our website?
Yeah. Okay, try it out.
Yeah. Okay, select the window. Okay. Do you see the large scale map?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to just first, one more time, I know you all were familiar, I went over sort of the general list, but I just wanted to recap this larger plan that the focus is what's already here and where are the gaps and where are the opportunities to increase the access to the shoreline and amenities for the shoreline? And the shoreline means the river, the cove and the creek creek. So I'm gonna focus in on one project here, project number five. Which I'm, I'm changing PDFs now, so that's it changed for you guys as well. The, okay, great. So project number five and this we called create public access to Lower Rock Creek. So this is the street end of Vancouver Avenue where the city owns a parcel. And we looked at this based on our different layers of analysis as an opportunity for public access. So we looked at existing conditions, we looked at environmental factors, we looked at permitting. We looked at feasibility in all these different ways and then couple of the things we noticed, or for example, that there's still a stretch of armoring here, you know, along the river, whereas it wasn't elsewhere. We noticed that this has been identified in other plans as um, an issue with untreated stormwater that goes directly into the creek here. And we knew that this house, you know, potentially was already already identified as being demolished. So there was a lot of momentum maybe already here that also added to the opportunity for this to become a project. And then we I'm gonna click over, so then we very conceptually propose, okay, what could this look like? This is not a final design. This is just, you know, what could this look like? What could the city do? And what would it take and what would it cost? So on the left, you see this plan with these concept sketches and on the right is the matrix table. So we basically go through row by row for every project and we did the same description of all of these factors that we looked at and how we thought about them. Um, so you can see over this graphic, we list, you know, from your SMP, what, you know, what are the goals this achieves? Going back to the core of this grant and this project, which is increasing access, so this could increase access to the creek and this could increase, this could be a recreational opportunity. And this could potentially alleviate trailhead congestion, other neighborhood impacts. This came up as an option when a lot of people described in the summertime, they may walk up the creek to maybe get to the falls or just to enjoy it. And so this was identified as an option of, well, maybe they can get there from here, you know, because there's not necessarily an official public trail to walk up the creek. So looking at this plan and I I could zoom in a little bit too. I don't know how big your screen is there. It's loading. Uh, again, really simply, uh, this could have a little, couple little parking spots. It could have a picnic table. It could have some trees. You could remove the rip wrap. You could kind of create a more natural gradient beach for people to be able to access it. And then this blue line represents conceptually an opportunity to create like a swale or some other sort of bio retention stormwater treatment that could be visual, use plants that could help treat the stormwater and be an amenity as well as address um, a lack of functionality that's there now. So putting all these together, we also did um estimate quantities. In some cases, it was like square feet of landscape that would be restored. Or another case, it's just like, you know, one one house demolished. It was a little bit more general or one stormwater improvement. Let me go back, zoomed out a little bit here. So then in our matrix, uh, we give an overview of the scores and overview of every element. So um, what type of access is it? Um, well, it's not a boat launch, it's not a trail, but it's new infrastructure potentially. It's an infrastructure improvement and it's a restoration opportunity. You know, what would the cost be? Well, it could be extreme, it could be very costly depending on this stormwater feature element. But that'll be a little bit more detail in the final draft. What's, what are the proposed features or amenities? We sort of outline those here. We described the kind of efforts that we think it would take to to implement this project. So what kind of outreach do you think, do we think you'll need? What kind of timeframe do we think this project needs? What kind of risks do we think there are additional information that might be needed? What kind of permits would be required? So you can see here. I can give a couple of examples or, you know, this is something to tune into when, if you are doing a more thorough review now with the packet in your hand, but um so, and then also some of the summary of our comments that we heard and from the public based on our outreach. Um, so I can pause here. I don't know how much this is like a Q and A or how you guys like to do this, but um or I can just continue to present a little bit further, but is there any questions at this point for how this is structured?
Any questions?
Maybe more of a prompt for you, Marina.
Yeah.
Maybe talk about the scoring part.
Yeah, okay. Well, Ben, that happens to be one of my next little PDFs here, so. Like I was ready for that. Um, so I don't, I think you, did you include all the appendixes in the, uh? Okay, great. So we've, 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 we've maybe not intentionally hidden some good sort of content here in the appendix where we may sort of revise things a little bit in this final draft to make it more upfront legible. But back in appendix C, we have outlined our methodology for the scoring. So you can look at something that, for example, alignment with existing planning documents and be like, well, what does that mean? So we described here, um, what that means is that we've looked at all the really Stevenson has a lot of great planning documents, like a lot of information and a lot of work that other consultants or staff have done. And we've basically reviewed all that and made sure to incorporate that when we're looking at these projects. So um if a site or a project has already been discussed and talked about and has support from past documents, it's gonna get a higher score. If it's sort of the first time it's ever been mentioned, I mean, it doesn't mean it's a bad project. It's just not gonna get as high of a score in this category. So another example is permitting and coordination requirements. We described how we look at feasibility um, for really implementing and and design and kind of moving it along and how complicated do we think it'll be? You know, how much coordination, how, you know, with a lots of parties or is it something that a smaller group can move forward? So um, that's another one where if it seemed like it wouldn't have a lot of permitting restrictions, it would be pretty simple to coordinate. Maybe, for example, the one we just looked at, the fact that that's a city-owned parcel makes it slightly less complicated than something where you maybe had to have to work with the county. It's a county-owned land and so obviously that's gonna add time, coordination, that's gonna affect that score. So the fact that the city owns this land gives it a little bit of a higher score for that easier coordination than something that is not. So um, so the same goes for timeframe projects that can be implemented sooner, got a little bit of a higher score. And projects that were a lower cost got a higher score. Um, this is really tiny. I'm gonna zoom in. And this is still maybe a little tiny, but hopefully you can kind of see. So then you can see this sort of, the summary table has our projects. And note for project six, we had a few options. So we did rate these different easement options separately. Um so your first score is our GIS analysis score. So I think in previous meetings that was presented to you, this was our first step where we just very objectively looked at, you know, physical characteristics, proximities, just really the raw data and gave scores to these different projects for like, you know, is it a super steep slope? Is it on a cliff? And that's gonna make access really difficult versus if it's a smooth gradient, right? There's, that's considered a more objective scoring. So these are, that's its first column. The second score is based on our public charrette exercise. So for people who came to that charrette, you remember getting play money. Uh, we gave people money to basically pay for the project that they wanted to vote for and they could give all their money to one project or they could, you know, give a little to this, get a little of that. And there is even opportunity to say, you know, I don't see my project. I'm gonna write it on this whiteboard and I want my money to go to this other thing. And we recorded all that. So uh, the charrette represents that money and sort of thousands at the time, but you know, in just uh, numbers for this. So those two are separate from what I just showed you then. These other ones are, you saw in the matrix, cost, alignment with plans, timeframe, you know, permitting and coordination, like complexity and then environmental impact, which has to do with um, I should say none, no projects even got to this list if they were considered like bad for the environment. So that has already been, I guess, agreed upon before they got here. And so once they've got to this point, it's more a matter of, well, does it will do mitigation to offset it, but it does have an environmental impact for how maybe disruptive it would be at the site. So um, putting those all together, we got overall scores. I'm gonna have to zoom out so you can kind of see. Um, and then rounded, so the top project did was that Rock Creek Drive Vancouver Avenue End, um, followed by the Upper Rock Creek Falls Trail, which is the one that's proposed to coordinate with the county um, on figuring out some access. And then uh, the West End Waterfront and then working with the interpretive center of the museum on some shoreline amenities. So those were the top. And then when you round them, we kind of end up with a few more, but yeah.
Marina, I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
Earlier in your presentation, you talked, you said that the final plan would would have a risk assessment, isn't it? And I guess I'm not quite sure what you mean by, you know, risk covers a pretty broad, you know, area in terms of you know, is that financial risk? Is it physical risk? You know, is it risked infrastructure? What kind of?
Yeah. Well, that might be, oh, that might be something we want to revise in our test if it's a triggering kind of word. It's, it's really meant to be more general. Um, it's like, is there any risk issues? Is there, this is kind of a, a little bit of a catchall kind of category where it's, it's something that we want to, if there It's it's something that we want to, if there's something we need to bring up about this project. Um. That needs to be considered before kind of moving forward. We put it in this category. So. In this example, um. What we wanted to kind of highlight, it's almost just the way we want to flag something for whoever's reading this document like, hey, just. Little bit of a flag here. Note, although that the city owns this parcel, you know. Technically, I mean, this is obviously just an aerial, but like where is? The high watermark versus um. Is it off the property? So do you actually still need an easement to get to? The water there's it's it's surrounded by um. Properties that are not owned by the city. So there's still. Maybe some coordination that needs to happen. This is something that still needs to be thought about. And so. Um, that's something where the I feel like. We flag it and the city can then kind of use that information as they make decisions or the public can use that information as they decide. Um, is. Because it may may or may not be a risk. So. Yeah. If that seems like something a little bit. More specific expectation for that word than. You know, we could definitely. Take it out of the final, you know?
Well, you know what? I was looking at this project in particular. You have a channel that is very confined by structures on either side and a bridge. That that bank armory is there for a particular reason and. They've been involved in. River restoration for several decades. You know, I kind of wonder, you know, how much flexibility we have there without creating uh. Or exacerbating a potential flood hazard. By removing that that ripper as much as I'd like to see it gone.
Definitely. Yeah, and and to me, that's. You know, and I guess, yeah, I guess the question is, is there a way we need to capture that? In this document or is it just something that? You assume whoever the first consultant, you know, if this moves forward, people just like the idea, you know, that's sort of the job of the first. Design consultant, right? Is that feasibility of if they're thinking about this stormwater? I I think it's a good one to think about altogether. You're thinking about that stormwater and the armoring and this access all at the same time because they're really interrelated. So whoever that would be. Um, I would hope that would be really a part of their first task is to look at that feasibility and like you're describing how much um. Is that armoring? Necessary for sort of before the. Hits the bridge and anything like that. Yeah.
Marina, something you said earlier um about does this parcel um touch the high watermark? There's an important concept that underlies that, but I'm hoping you can kind of address about the uh public's right. To the what's below the high watermark.
Right, just. Just generally um. The general like SMP planning and everything. Yeah. So. Right, the the public has, this is the. Initial assumption for all of this, right? The public has a right to access these shorelines of the state. And so. It's a part of what the state has asked of cities is. Have a plan so that the public can get to their shorelines. They can access them. Without, you know. Having public access for right, not. Uh, crossing over somebody else's land or jumping off, having to jump off a bridge or whatever it is to get to the water, right? So um. That line is a really important line for a lot of that planning work when you demarcate the ordinary high water line. So that goes for the cove and the river. That line is that connection point and then. The shoreline management area that's offset from that. That's the zone where we're focusing a lot of our attention on through the city. For this plan um. That said, we did think a little bit beyond that because. This is about getting people to the shoreline and sometimes you have to start a little bit further out than. Then the smaller buffer, right? So we know, looking at the different neighborhoods and where people live. This plan did consider a um. How people were going to get there. Um, and not just. What they did once they got close to the water um. I don't know that I have any of that text pulled up and um as far as like um sharing the actual code references or you wanted me to do that, but.
Think that would be a no.
Not tonight anyway.
You've read it enough.
So to kind of pull out to the high level again, um and then let us dive deep onto any. Uh, particular aspect of this. We. Approached this. Integrated public access and trail plan um from several several different angles. So first is that GIS analysis. So the team at the. DCG watershed um. Hold all the environmental layers and they found in in here um. And displayed on map there what what's dark and what's light. So that's a combination of all. The factors that they look at. So uh things like steep slopes are going to be a place to avoid because it would be um. Actually dangerous and very expensive to overcome the the steep slope. Um, uh wetlands or impacts there would have a much lighter shade. So you're able to look at this map uh through their GIS analysis environmental impact uh assumptions. And um say, okay, that's where we should focus uh some of our effort as having less risk or or being more physical. Um, we looked at it through the um. Public engagement lines where uh the first workshop that we did brought users together and say, hey, how are you using shorelines? Where are you seeing gaps? Where are you seeing? Were you seeing uh good things that exist there? Reflected that back to them through the sharet to say, okay, here are some projects that address exactly what you said. Uh, help us prioritize these. Help us narrow down what project could be. Uh, those things are all reflected in here. Uh. As stated, we got some public comments um. That's we didn't get some things right about it. Um. Uh, in particular, there's concern. About um the west end of Cascade Avenue and how to connect uh the ports uh. Building there and pedestrians that might make their way along the waterfront uh along past Bob's Beach and get them back to uh railroad crossing. There's a sidewalk proposed in here. There's concern um uh from two of the public comments about. Um, use conflicts or space conflicts between sidewalk and parking, which is concerned down there. And uh the comments are. Assume that it would take away uh parking that exists. So um. That's something that you all should. Look more closely at before we recommend any specific part of that project or see if. We can. Accomplish both balls. Uh, with that um. One supportive letter about the project number seven there uh addressing. I'm in Cemetery Road Neighborhood Concerns and Trespass Concerns and so focusing some things up. Um, there uh on the north side, accounting property on the north side. Um. And. Then in conversations I've had with them since the draft plan came uh. Having some management activity happen on the south side where right. Now they get a lot of trespass because uh it's not very clear where there is public access, where the public should be, what's private property up there. Um. Where you can park, where you can't park. And so bring some of those management ideas from that group to to help manage things. So. Providing some signage, if you would end up on on Cemetery Road, providing some signs to say, hey, go that way, not this way, go that way. Uh, having some parking uh areas up there to accomplish the same goal um. Potentially doing improvement at the end there to. Um, really funnel the publics where they should be and keep them from where they shouldn't be. Uh, trash cans if. If appropriate at that site too um.
And.
Go ahead.
Oh, I say and to add to that, that. We'll amend this map with a little symbol and it'll be. Not necessarily a project. It'll be a management action kind of symbol. So like you're describing, we'll put one there at the location and. And there'll be a few others throughout based on the feedback you've been getting.
When you combine all those different ways that we've looked at it and the work that they've done, we've come up with a a plan that's um. Can be acted on. Soon, we're going to do some refinements to um. More clearly budget uh for things or be incorporated into the uh city's capital improvement plan. Um. But all all these projects have elements that they can go fairly soon. Uh, there may be some that have elements that are a ways out uh. There. Uh, maybe some zones just. Don't uh stand up. After. More project specific review of those actions um. That's what happens whenever you create a plan, things end up changing on the project level.
Well, I think too, as you take any of these plans, if you if you go to movement, again, there's. A tremendous amount of work that still needs to be done to make sure. Uh, that it will be successful. I mean, thinking. Uh, just about the positive. Aspects that you're trying to achieve, but also what are some of those other? Impacts that. You may want to try to address to uh. To ensure that it is accepted and supported out there and such as that sidewalk issue. Now, how do you? How do you? How do you look at that? I mean, how do you? Design to provide a safe. Pedestrian access as well as the parking that's needed. So. Yeah.
Yeah, you do have a hand from the public.
Okay.
You should be able to mute or unmute. There you go. We can't hear you on that Bernard. If you are speaking. If you'd like to try to call in the numbers on the agenda and the meeting ideas there too.
You can hear it very faintly. I thought I could.
Um, and then the other. The other comment letter you have is from Department Ecology with some very detailed requests for changes there. So um. This uh presentation of the the draft is not a final draft and we want to acknowledge that it's not a final draft of that and aren't expecting any. Uh, recommendation of approval tonight until things get uh worked out.
So bad to finish cooking before. Well, with that in mind, what do you see the sequence's next steps?
Um. Certainly next steps involve city council review on Thursday night um. Presentation similar to what you've all received of generally the process things went through the public engagement that was down for this um and um. Circus dive or surface like some of the projects that are identified there. Uh, we're not anticipating that they would adopt that. Uh, we have opened up the possibility that they would have a special meeting to do a little bit deeper dive into. Things on. I don't think they've uh. Come together on special meeting date, but um. The twenty fifth, sixth or seventh um one of the last, the last week of the month. We are up against deadlines with Department of Ecology for the grant. And so that means that we can't send money to um DCG while we can't send estate fund uh to DCG. Watershed after the end of this month and we have a deliverable that's due to them at the end of this month. So um the timeline is not working for us um. But we'll be able to wrap up a bunch of the edits that we suggest. And for. There. The. Plan itself isn't going to be a regulatory document. In fact, that's one of the reasons why we're. Doing it is because of the regulations that we have will often just sit there until there's a project that's proposed in a small growth place. Or slow growth place like Stevenson. Projects don't get proposed often and so we need to be more proactive and. So um. Incorporating this. Plan into those regulations though is a next step that we were never anticipating. Doing under this contract, but having some recommendations about how to incorporate this into the um. Uh, SMP that was. Finally adopted. In twenty twenty two. Uh, will be part of that review. So there's opportunities for change. At at any time.
Uh, changing the plan itself.
And then we'll. Once we um settle on the projects here. Uh, there will be opportunities to incorporate that into the uh capital improvement program, capital, the budgeting tool for any specific year, how the city might spend its. Funds to prioritize or de-prioritize specific projects. Base projects. That would be within this too. Not sure.
Well, I understand the grant deadline, the no provision for an extension of the branch. I mean, there's so much work that has gone into this. There's a lot of good stuff here. But as we saw from the public comments, there are those those details that are. Looking at them out. Um. You know, I. I don't want to, I don't want to rush it through this to something that is not. Pretty much fully metted within the community.
Yeah. And I don't want to rush you into that place.
No. So I mean, there's. Expectations. My concern is if you if you sign off on a plan by the end of the month. People are going to say, well, that's the plan. And you indicated, well, no, we can go back and we can adapt this plan. We can refine it. We can, we can do that.
Mm hmm.
But someone's always going to come back and say, well, no, you adopted this plan and now you're you're sort of abandoning. So it's how do you set those expectations? So when you when you start to move this power ahead and move it to implementation. You know. You create another controversy up there or some. Lack of support or criticism in terms of what's what's going on.
I'll talk to the Department of Ecology about tomorrow. After getting their comments today, see how to. How to move forward. While avoiding that concern you state the 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 sense of finality of something that. May not be what the community wants.
Yeah, I I I I don't want to, I don't want this to stumble. It's too important. Um, and I and. And yet, at the same time, I don't want to drag on forever either. You know, it's something that, you know, we need to wrap up and and if there's something with projects that we can do one, if there's opportunities. We need to do that as well. I'm just concerned about.
Timing.
Well, yeah, just making sure. We're we're doing it the right right way here so that we have that community support behind us.
At least my question would be, what's the next? Thing that we need to do about it?
What we can do. One specific thing we can do is we can lay out a cross section. Um, within uh Cascade Avenue where there's a concern. To show where it's. May or may not conflict with parking. And so. And so if that concern for parking is removed, is that sidewalk or connection back and move back um toward town, something that could be recommended? It's very possible that it couldn't, but we'll at least have some information to to gauge instead of what right now is the question about whether there would be uh conflict there or not.
We might also and you might think about how you characterize this. Are these conceptual projects? They really are still pretty much conceptual. And saying, yes, these are just, this is just a conceptual plan subject to further design and community input. Now, these are not that's something that we're locked in, that they are in fact ideas that were generated through this process where the community has shown a fair amount of interest. It resets the stage for enhancing our access to, to our shoreline. But it's also subject to further design and community. I'm just trying to think of, of how you can work around the, the, the grant administrative procedural deadline that you have in the color.
We could work with that certainly um as a conceptual basis that'll be further refined. We uh have the next we developed this as um the beginnings of our uh parks integration plan. Proceeding um in the same way that we would develop the plan according to state guidelines. And we've got uh state grant funds to do parts of plan next. And so you can immediately roll out into that with the expectation of amendment might be made or will be made. As the uh parks and land plan is is worked on.
Like you said, it should be fresh, it should be further evaluated, designed, refined. Their feasibility, I mean further evaluation.
Did you call on me? I was just gonna add to that, um. Yeah, that this is just a great, definitely concept level. Um, gathering of all the documentation, all the input, all the analysis, and then, you know, we see this as a successful launching point for then getting the next grant or the next step, which will really dive into more of those design details and, and considerations. You know, that you mentioned this example of sidewalk and parking. Right, that's a, that's a design problem. But like stepping back, the concept of like, the goal is we want to walk and park, right? That's what we're establishing in this document. Like, yes, we want to walk and park right here. Then the next step is to get the designer, you get to figure out, figure out a solution, right? So I think, I, you know, I don't know what more we can maybe do in this document to convey that, or maybe some more introductory kind of text or something, but um helps uh disclaimer, disclaimer, maybe like a big picture timeline or something, but um it definitely is, you, you know, especially when you have a you didn't, you mentioned your, um, you did stream design, so I think depending on like your background, like I know for me, I definitely jump into the details of things right away and depending on the person, you're gonna be like, well, how are you gonna do that? Well, it's like you kind of get ahead of it because that's a part of it. That's kind of more interesting or exciting. But for the sake of this document, it's just more a matter of like really high level. This has, this has the support. This is, you know, we're kind of honing in on the, the pulsing light, but we haven't honed in on like the single beam of what that project is, right? So um, I just think there's, there were so many different ideas and this was a good way to kind of hone in and then for sure that the next step is to do that detailing, so. That said, if something was really just like, look, there, that's a non-starter kind of a detail, right? That's obviously something we would have considered. So for sure, if there's any of these projects that you know, we're getting some feedback of like, you know, you, you guys can't even, this is not even gonna happen. This person will never wanna, or this, this group will never cooperate or whatever, you know, that's definitely something we'd wanna, that kind of feedback we'd wanna know, right? As far as something being controversial, but as far as we've heard so far, we haven't gotten any of that input.
It's worth talking a little bit about this specific one too in that, that broader lens. The SMP currently has this um objective policy to encourage continuous pedestrian access along shoreline, so Rock Creek, Rock Cove. And if you apply that literally, it would mean a trail through every property. And one of the um uh marching orders for uh the consultant group here was to really refine what Stevenson means by that. Do we really want trails through every property? The plan that you're putting the, the train bridge at Rock Creek coming each uh bridge at Rock Creek. But we need to find a way to still have the access through the, the public property and back back into the downtown area so that you can get to Rock Creek. The project number two gives ideas for that. Project number three gives ideas for that. See, principle um applies for Rock Creek, uh Upper Rock Creek particularly, where we don't want to put a trail through everyone's neighborhood or everyone's backyard. We understand that that's not gonna happen and this plan itself would become a non-starter there. And so the alternatives in that case are finding connections um on the north side, the undeveloped side, the county inside, the, the landslide and what that means uh to, to have pedestrians going through that area should that happen. Recommending some ways that it might and further analysis there, so. Yeah, the reason why I kind of bring that up in relation to the um West Cascade project is we, now we identify that we're not going that way. Finding a way for pedestrians to know or the visitor to know, uh, okay, you've made it this far and now where you go. You can do that uh in other ways. There's um project number four, identifying putting some share of the road signs on the pavement and calling it a day could be uh good application on the side of the street too.
Wh- wh- what idea might be in the final plan is to have something back in the implementation that really talks about the process and how you'll, you'll take these concepts and refine those designs and, and, and evaluate their feasibility and acceptance and those connections with the community. And that talked just about, you know, the form of permitting and, and planning requirements, but that outreach to the continuing outreach to the community.
We're sort of constrained. Uh, I mean, the, the parking uh pretty much ends at Wals Beach, right? Uh, beyond that, uh, as the biggest obstacles are the homeowners that move on the west end of Cascade. And then the railroad, which I don't know, you might as well put it in an application to God. Cause I don't know that they're gonna be keen on anything we try to do. And not to offend any of your religious sensibilities.
Well, I mean, those are those design factors that you're gonna have to deal with, you know? You know, you're, you're putting these facilities that are gonna affect adjacent private property. And, you know, how do you, how do you respect those, those properties? And the interests of those owners? And at the same time, enhance your access to, to the shoreline. So I think there's ways to do that, but it is a continuing process in terms of how that design works. And oftentimes your public response comes when you start laying out definitive plans. They may look at, at a general conceptual plan and say, oh, I don't have time to deal with that. Sure. Any additional comments, folks?
Yeah. My name is Paul Lee. I live with my wife, the eternal corrector on McAvoy Lane. Um, that knows me because I was one of the citizen volunteers for the ports process um in, in putting into the shoreline. Plan. Um, I speak not so much as a windsurfer, which I did earlier, but as a park user. And I gotta say at the outset, we really like what the city and the board have done with respect to the shoreline access in general. And to speak to the chairman's comment, when you get down to more definitive elements of the plan, people come out and I'm out here for um to speak to proposal number three pedestrian connection to waterfront west end. And I want to augment a little bit of what Bernard Versari has written in, into the record. And it's kind of more from a user's point of view. It seems to me that you guys, you guys want, want to look at a couple of things. One, will the public use, and I'm speaking to the loop access, to the extension of the trail up through the port property, up to the road and back. Um, you gotta ask yourself, I think, whether the public will really use it a lot and whether it will be worth it, those two things. To the first point, right now the trail ends sort of in the bushes on the west end of Bob's Beach. And I don't know, people done studies of public use of that terminus, but it seems to me, apart from the grudging acceptance of the Bob's Beach users and the port and I don't know what they're called now, the Riverside um cabins. I think you'll find that the current use is positive. People use that as an endpoint. They come all the way to the end, they en- encounter windsurfers and kiders and, and, and sailors. And they stop and they sit on a rock bench and look and then go back. I don't, this is just me talking, but put yourself in this position, you've walked the entire trail. You get to the end, you're gonna want to go back because it's so pretty. You know, that pathway behind you is beckoning. You don't want to leave the waterfront and go up past port employees working in a building and get on a busy road and head back. If your car is in Bob's Beach parking lot, you just go up up the beach, up, up the grass to your car. If you're east of there, I submit that people will be happy just to go back inside the scenic route. As you diverge from the waterfront, you're diverging from the goals of public access to the waterfront. It's kind of confusing. What do you do when, when you get up to the port parking lot? I submit that public use would probably not want to go up on that loop, okay? Second question, is it worth it? Okay. Bernard has spoken to it, I don't Pat Alba has, I think, spoken to it. Um, they're not really in favor of it. Obviously, windsurfers don't like a lot of congestion and competition for parking. It's really, um, the west end parking lot is more east above these parking lot. Most people who use that part are over more by the, the uh the landing area. So not having that doesn't enhance things that I think it makes it worse. There are gonna be people who want to say, well, let's go to the end and they'll drive down and they'll probably want to park in the port parking lot. You know, because it's, it's right there and an already crowded Bob's Beach parking lot. I don't know if that's the best thing. They probably are happy with um, when it's available parking east of there. Seems to me that there is just not enough bang for the buck to, to warrant this and that the amendment to leave the park, that trail terminus the way it is is rather um easy and, and wise, given that this sidewalk from nowhere. I don't know. See, this is just me talking. Would be served, but be used. I mean, people will walk on the road, okay? And I don't know that a sidewalk would reduce pedestrian vehicle conflicts there much more than it currently is. So to sum up, it doesn't seem to me like while planning always likes to have loops and seeing new territory, I don't think people using that want to see the new territory of the port office building, okay? So um so in conclusion, I would second uh Bernard's letter and I think the port's inclination to pretty much keep things they are and at this point, I appreciate your retention.
Can I ask you, as a, a windsurfer too, that rigging conflicts with pathways?
Um, I, I have been guilty of rigging over the stones, the informal path there. Um, so that, yeah, that's, that's a conflict that's given, given the nature of people. That can only get worse than under this proposal, which people say, hey, there's a path here. It's a formal path more than just these black stones over grass. I don't know what the path structure is gonna be. I hope it's nothing much more than that soft surface, whatever. If you, powers that be are such that you've got to have a loop. Somebody's got to have a loop, then we would ask to fall back to, that it be, you know, minimal, have a low impact on the environment such as a bark dust path or something like that, not sidewalks. They just, just speaking as a citizen, there are other parts of the city that cried out for sidewalk. When again, uh, I believe if you put yourself there, you wouldn't see the advantage of walking on a sidewalk there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other thoughts, other comments, folks? Would like us to consider.
Well, that is a valid point. But then that, that sort of torpedoes the idea that the contiguous pathway through the city. Uh, and we're right back to where we started. So uh you know, the, the question that the question that Paul brings up about, you know, is it really worth it? I mean, is it one of those, if we build it, they will come or, you know? I'm not really certain how. This, this seems like a, 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 a part of the plan that's that's gonna be difficult to address.
I think um, that, that was really uh good to hear because I could definitely imagine someone deciding that's actually now the start of the path, the way you described it that way and that I'm gonna park there now, whereas it used to be is sort of like outside of the main area, you could kind of find a spot there for the windsurfers. I can, I can totally visualize that. Um. I think I want to speak to the fact that part of when we thought about all these connections, um, like you're describing that future condition, we're thinking like future, future. And so there is a phasing element of all this that's not really always necessarily written in this. I mean, so it could definitely just not make sense now, but if suddenly things really change. so it could definitely just not make sense now, but if suddenly things really change over there at the west end, maybe in like 10, 15 years, it suddenly starts to make sense. And so the, one of the purposes of this document is to have these ideas now. And so if the city had any incentives or any sort of code or anything that you wanted to kind of say now about, like you described, hey, we want this to be soft surface or these are the types of things we want these as they occur. This is the chance to do that. It doesn't necessarily mean this project, everything you see is going to be implemented immediately. It could be that some pieces are just at a different timeline than other pieces. So I think that goes back to this being this kind of bigger picture document. And so that's something maybe we could mention in the timeline, or maybe it's a more general discussion that when these, if and when any of these projects move forward, it could just be pieces of them, components of them. And you know, these kind of design challenges would be addressed at that point.
Other thoughts?
Doesn't this all roll into the success plan too? Which is, you know, in the future. So just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it does.
We're not looking at a year from now. We're looking down the line.
So Ben, how would you like us to provide input? If this is basically trying to try to wrap this up.
So summarizing what I heard is to focus it on its conceptual focus on the immediate refinement that we'll try to do as part of our first right plan. Probably understand that if we give me an indication of whether you want to see anything and recommend anything, there's no requirement for the planning commission to recommend. Council adoption of this certainly a part of the process. Can't expect to make a recommendation.
Sure.
Or you could see that authority back to the city council.
As you say, it's not a regulatory document. It won't be a regulatory document. Unless somehow it gets referenced in a regulatory document, in which case it takes on one for its own. But I, you know, the thing we're talking about here is to, is to look at what is the process? This conceptual plan, it's just really the initial step of a process to develop better shoreline access with, within the city. And I think you know, folks need to say, hey, you know, these projects are clearly going to need additional review and evaluation. Some may be feasible, some may not. Some may be desirable in terms of the community elders, some may not. But what we've tried to do is come up with sort of the global picture in terms of what are the, what are the key opportunities? Move that ahead. But and again, I I'd be reluctant to try locking, lock in too much on this in terms of, hey, yeah, this is the plan. Yeah, we're going to put sidewalks on on that west end. I think it's key to, it's key to good conversation in terms of what you want to do. Go back to what's the underlying intent. You want to provide better public access to that particular area of the waterfront. Maybe the sidewalk is the best way to do it. I, I keep wondering about how you get it over the railroad tracks. I mean, that's just, that's phenomenal. The expensive, I think, in terms of the value.
The only other thing I can think of is that you just cross where everybody else crosses before Bob's Beach. And then figure out something to do with that. Because, you know, a railroad cross is inherently risky in itself. And again, not reference the omnipotence of the railroad.
Yeah, great. You're asking me certainly, particularly in an area where you have a similar situation. So should we be jotting down comments that?
I would definitely appreciate it.
Yeah. I, I think especially the, if, if it's feeling something that's controversial or it's the like, I'm just looking, sticking with a specific example, that, that line type doesn't need to be sidewalk. That line type could just be future connection. Right? So we could, we could make some minor adjustments now on some of these concepts that have been really triggering and, and, and make them less detailed in that way. So it's still keeping with the sort of big picture, keeping this larger network connection idea, but then they don't have to say, we want a sidewalk here.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that step in terms of saying it's a sidewalk is just, just a step too far.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. And it kind of gets away from the, well, like again, so if we're talking about this as being these concepts and just really wanting people to think it's like you said, it's harder sometimes to think about it that way. And it's easier to think about it in a detailed way, but it also can be distracting when you hone in on like sidewalk, what the versus like, well, how about, how about in 20 years, this all is connected and you have all these options to get everywhere. That's, that's a different idea. And so we want to get that feedback. And so if something like this is really distracting from that input, it's, it's not like we've, you know, this is high level enough. We shouldn't include that detail then for this area, I think.
One of Department of Ecology's suggestions is to have something in chapter one of what this plan is and what this plan isn't. And I'm imagining writing that to be this conference, this plan is a conversation starter. And so we're starting a conversation about what the particulars of that design are. We're starting a conversation about which project should be budgeted for it. Starting conversations for long-term vision.
Step back. That expectation of, yes, this is again, the work in process. Because like I said, I, I don't want to lose any of these because someone takes exceptions to the detail or how it's presented. These are all good ideas. We talked about many of these over the years. And I want to see that, that conversation continue. I don't want to see it get disrupted because someone's unhappy.
And that one aspect.
Well, yeah, or just about the process, you know, that they need to have that. Other thoughts? Wanted to give you a chance, Pat.
No, but what Mr. Lee said made a lot of sense. We, I walked since last seven years we've lived here. We've walked down there quite a bit and we always have, and I do the loop oftentimes. You know, we'll do a loop and it's always when I'm with my wife, on which way do you want to go back? We will always stick with the river. In other words, we have a choice of sidewalk or to go back along the river. And we'll always go back along the river ordinarily. I mean, so having a sidewalk, I mean, what he said is he described perfectly what we always do. And even Bob's Beach getting to the end, the fact that that end there, we never think, well, how come this? In other words, the beauty is, is those locations. And also Dan made a good point about the conflict sometimes with the windsurfers and stuff. Or even at Bob's Beach, sometimes you have that. But that's the beauty of those areas is interacting with those people. And maybe people wish you weren't coming through the pedestrian, but you're going there to see the people at Bob's Beach. I mean, that's why you're there. You're there to, you're seeing things, you have people that aren't used to that area, tourists. That those congestions are sources of the conflict are what makes that area exciting. And so, yeah, maybe you might have to step away if somebody has crossed the trail. But that's the whole experience. And as a courtesy, you're going to do that or you'll figure that out or they'll say, hey. So those, I'm just trying to say congestion and conflicts oftentimes are the beauty of the area. And you can't, that's why you go there. I'm not talking about conflict in the negative sense, but congestion, but I said that any of the areas when we walked around Stevenson, we do quite a bit. Anytime you get in the sidewalks and concrete versus those paths and, and I know I've been real critical of the city a lot of times, but it has been a beautiful job what's been done down there and stuff. On the port down there, there really has been some good work down there. And a lot of that good work just from a, somebody who likes nature. I mean, it doesn't involve concrete. It's off the office. I mean, it's a path, but it's mostly green. It's all the red crap along the river, what they did, they just done beautiful work. But it's almost the absence of man-made stuff. And the man-made stuff gets you there where you can concentrate on the river and stuff. Anyway, so I didn't plan on saying anything other than what you said really resonated with the use that we've historically done for the area. And I bet you were not unusual to most people that come into town, they're just going to, they're going to walk those areas exactly like you said. And they're going to, they're going to go back that way because you have a choice of that beauty. And for some people, they, it's the first time they've seen it. If they're a tourist, they're, they're going to want to stay there even more. So versus the sidewalk here that goes through town or something, well, if you're there for that. Anyway, I'll just shut up. He made some good points.
Anybody else? Is Bernard people?
It looks like the Mike. Hi. Does, have you tried Christie's, Bernard? You can try hers. I think there's a lot of merit to what, what's been said about the route as you kind of come up by the port building and turn and parallel out the parking in the railroad. That's not really a scenic experience. Yeah. And so where the, you know, the flagstone path currently goes up into the harping is kind of like hugging that if you were going to do a return route, I think would be better and kind of leaving more of Bob's Beach as that kind of like Vista experience instead of a part of, of the path.
I've, I've only sailed from Bob's Beach a couple of times. I usually go to the river valley, but I don't know if it's a conflict with the windsurfers or normal itself in there. Just with, you know, rigging and things like that.
I don't know that conflict is, I think congestion is more. And even that has a negative connotation. It's, it's kind of like it's busy down there and it's busier at some times than others. And that's part of the experience. If you're coming off the cruise boat or whatever, and you walk down there, you're like, oh, these are those things that we see zipping around. And they're laid out and you can kind of watch somebody setting their stuff up. That's, that's something they carry out in that experience. So.
Yes, multiple uses in one area. And I think, I think that's really what you want to achieve and make it attractive to variety of those, not just any other thoughts tonight on this particular jet topic? Let's move on. Thank you, Marina, for being here this tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll log off and yeah, let us know if there's any follow-up questions or let Ben know.
Thanks again.
Yeah, thanks. Cheers.
Okay. Up there.
Am I going first? You going first? Parking committee is active. We have scheduled the parking assessments for Thursday, July 6th and Saturday, July 8th, 11 to 6th, looking for volunteers. We're doing two hour shifts. So if you know of anyone, you know, my email. Yep, but we're going forward.
Yeah, all you have to be able to do is count and get around town and damn.
And get around town. I actually had someone else. Could they drive? I figured it would be fine. Yeah.
Yeah. Right. So the last time we did a parking use study was during COVID. It was in September during COVID. So emerging on the other side of it is and doing it at the beginning of July is something this community is very happy to add to the conversation there and be able to review the changes over time, different parts of the year. All of those things are, are working in concert. While there are several things, I guess, working in concert. One is the usual study so that we have a better idea of where there are parking issues, where additional parking is needed currently. And what to expect as, as growth occurs. So city council, I've talked about this before, has been presented with a draft change to the parking policies. Right now, there are some, some overnight prohibitions through the downtown overnight parking prohibitions throughout, throughout in the downtown area. There are other streets that don't have an overnight prohibition. There's not a lot of rationale. The rationale doesn't necessarily make sense for what's happening down there currently. So reviewing what that looks like with the anticipation that if we are to facilitate development in the sense of can development occur on the small lots with the parking requirements? Opening up the possibility that the users might be parking on the street overnight. And that if that's going to put them in conflict with the police who are going to ticket them every night, finding some solutions for that, relaxing the prohibition of overnight parking, maybe just having a couple nights a week so that the works crew can go out and do some street sweeping and meetings on, on the days along the curves where there's not any vehicles there. That's occurring. The idea that we might allow for development to occur if they pay into a city fund to provide parking on the street in lieu of parking on the site. They would have the choice to provide the parking spaces onsite as is currently the only option, or they have a second option to pay into. The parking committee is also looking at that in terms of which, where there are opportunities to increase the number of parking spaces on street. And there are several opportunities to gain parking throughout downtown. So they'll prioritize that, recommend the areas that should happen sooner than later. And that recommendation will be used to establish a cost for a buyout. So it's going to cost the city X amount to add these spaces on street. How many, what's the cost per parking space? And then that would be the amount that developer will be expected to pay into that city fund to, to increase it. And then that would be the amount that developer will be expected to pay into that city fund, so to increase it instead of. Providing it onsite, so that'll be an option, um. That will be presented to you and then further refining the work that you all did in two thousand and twenty-one about. Uh, that involved reducing the, the total parking requirement for buildings, so. If, if we need to keep looking at that, keep evaluating that, we do that. A good one.
Maybe I'm trying to tell, but if I. I can remember sitting down counting cars using the one near the, the couplets. It's quite a time, it is pretty, you know, small.
What makes you think? Ben took us on a field trip at our last. Meeting and we're all like, oh, that's wrong and oh, what's that? And it's, it really does make you think.
Navigation policy, Ben, where are we?
We've a little bit stalled on that, um, with Charlie doing his travel. And so, um. I have not been pushing him and he's not been pushing me on that, um. Well, the major thing that stalled us out in January was, um. The staff turnover within the county's planning department and so they're still. Navigating that turnover, they got, they're up to two, um. Now they were down to one. So they're up to two, but that's still one less than they have. They're trying. Keep their head above water with development.
But you were also, we were trying to look at land utilization along. Just outside the city of the county in terms of. What would we see in terms of existing land use densities? Right? Um, we're saying you would have some mapping being done on that?
We gathered maps of, um, the density that's allowed in all the zones, you know, being able to display, uh. What you can do within city limits, within the different zones, within city limits and what you can build in the county. And then we had some comparison to the existing density that's out there and, um. There was something going on with the data set that, that we gave them to work on and want to refine that data set, uh, to better display it and. Something that both, uh, the public works director and I want to do and will be trying to, um. Scope out a project for how to, we can help us achieve that, haven't done that yet.
Well, it is important to see what that existing land use pattern is out there and what. Some of these areas may be committed to a certain, certain density already. To alter that and alter that development. Alright, so. You know, thoughts, thoughts for the day?
See, what did I put in there? I put in a, um. A link that I hope you'll follow to the earthquake aftermath from Turkey. Absolutely beautiful visuals, the way they used to tell a story there, uh, a horrific story about, um. Uh, what to do with all the, um, debris and, uh, from the buildings that fell down. A very big earthquake, so, um, something that we. Escalation zone is ticking. So hopefully it's not, uh, as catastrophic for us as it was for those areas of Turkey, but have. Disposal of, uh, building materials and just coping with, uh, aftermath emergency is something that. We can learn from, uh, others unfortunate experience there. And then another one to, um. From that Strong Towns organization about who are streets for.
That was really good. It had a great visual in it on the speed limits and how many people. Are injured or killed by cars per speed limit. It was very, very interesting. Pedestrians, I should say.
You haven't had anything like that much, have you?
It's been a couple of years since I can remember one, not totally plugged in, um. Russell Street, down in SR fourteen, first street is where. Uh, it's usually happened.
Well, I mean, they, you know, they put those little cups with the yellow flags and I thought, well, that's kind of really work. But, uh. Yeah, that, that particular intersections problematic in that regard.
I find, what I find more dangerous is the sort of informal crossers and your between those crosswalks that step out from behind a car.
Guilty as charged, I've gone to the drugstore, I mean, you know, straight through the middle of it.
You mentioned the drugstore, um, back to parking, one of the members of the committee is, is there to be an advocate for ADA. Um, parking spaces around and she's being a very good advocate for that, so some of the.
She talked about.
They have ADA parking, uh, around the sun?
The only on-street ADA parking we have is in the new areas on, uh, Cascade Avenue. The only on-street ADA parking we have is in the new areas on, uh, Cascade Avenue.